Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday, August seventeenth. Time is seven oh four. I have the three Selectmen present. I have the town administrator present. I have Mr. Fred Muller present recording the decisions of Dunbar. And I have the Old Home Day Committee present. Thank you gentlemen for coming in. And we have a few other guests, so we'll talk about that later. One minute, gentlemen, sir. Okay, um, gentlemen, I have first amendment to last week's meeting.
We'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August third, twenty twenty-three. As amended.
And all seconds down. Any discussion on those minutes, sir? Gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is the football on tonight? I'm sorry? Is the football on?
No. No Patriots.
Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment. Back row. Gentlemen, you're on the agenda. You know everyone else on the agenda. Okay, bring it back to the, to the, um, agenda. Okay, um, can we do it? You wanna do it in order or you wanna do it out of order?
Oh, you can do it in order. I don't think this would take long. This is his application.
Okay. Chris, uh, we have, uh, Chris has, uh, got an application here from the council pack seventy-five. This is, um, this is Chris Kenny. Welcome.
Oh, it's an application to use the second floor.
Yes, it is. Uh, thank you for, I appreciate you being available by phone. There's a town administrator that let us know that there was some conflict and there's an issue on, and you may have to adjust your dates because we have some dual book, and we can't have that. I think the fir- first month, Lea was telling me that October will work, but thereafter, your dates may have to be adjusted. Okay? Because it's the first month.
No problem.
And we wanna support everyone we can, but we can't have a double book. It doesn't work that way. And, um, I know you're gonna have a lot of little kids running around. Just beware that there are some safety cautions, precautions. Like, there's an elevator. The elevator is not for little kids to go up and down. The elevator is for really handicapped individuals. Okay? And just keep that in mind. And so you, sometimes you have to chase the children off that because they think it's cool to push the button and go up. Although, they may not think it's so cool because Dave keeps telling me it's slow as molasses.
They'll get up there about the end of the meeting.
Yeah, exactly. And, uh, Dave, you wanna make some comments?
Um, no, we just wanna make sure that, uh, the place is used properly. We just put a lot of money into finishing the floors and stuff up there. Make sure stuff's not sliding around and scratched up. There is some AV equipment that just got installed there. And, uh, that stuff's gonna be in the back corner of the stage on the left-hand side. We, unless you need it for part of your program, you'd like that.
No, I guess.
I've got a question. Right now, currently, there's two tables similar to this.
Upstairs.
Called plastic. From the signs group, how many tables are you thinking you're gonna need? Do we put, move any of our old tables up there yet?
There's two of the old tables up there still. But I was thinking about, maybe we talk about it a little bit later tonight, maybe purchasing a couple more of the easier ones because even though the big tables, I'd love to be able to use them there, the more we run them around, people are gonna scratch things up with them because they're just so heavy.
Oh, yeah, they're huge there.
So I'm thinking if we have the girls, maybe get a couple more tables. Start off with four and see how that goes.
How many tables we're talking about?
Yeah, no, thanks for letting me be here. And, uh, yeah, it doesn't matter. I mean, we, we get along without tables. It's nice to have tables because we keep them separated by the end, so.
Okay. We'll have at least have two tables up there for use.
Okay.
Okay. And you know what's carry in, carry out? You know what I mean by that? Trash in, trash out. Okay? When I say good stuff in, the trash is where it remains, and that's out.
It's good.
Okay.
The only other thing too is, um, the chairs are kinda lined up for stage use now. If you organize them for around a table, you'd like to put them back that way if you could.
Okay, yeah, of course. We pride ourselves as young, as being able to do a place better than when we found it. So I'll be sure to give them a rule about some kid on the elevator.
And in security, uh, just remember the keys have to be returned in a timely fashion to the town administrator.
Figuring that he's coming tomorrow to fix those boxes.
Nice. So I only have one thing. When the new applicants after the board approves the use, I ask that one of you from your organization meets with me so that we go through the whole process. I give you a tour. You know where everything is and how, what things look like and what's expected of you lately.
Okay.
Okay, so whether it's you or, um, is it Lea?
Yeah, Lea.
Yeah. Before your first meeting, if you could just make sure that you come here, um, and notify me in advance, make sure I'm here and say, hey, I want to work in the library. We're gonna be meeting next Monday or Tuesday. Um, so when it's fresh in your mind, someone will go through the building with you.
Okay.
This is a one-time, uh, event. And you've come to us, okay? We just wanna make sure we, we meet you and you understand where, what we're coming from. It's a newly renovated building. We want, it's a part of Dunbar, and we wanna keep it in operational use. Because, uh, I'll give you one example. Something gets flushed on the toilet and it plonked the toilets. That means, well, the elevator goes down. Can't be used. And the thing is, and so I wanna make sure that every organization has a chance to use it and use it wisely. Okay? And that's, that's all.
Okay.
So.
But we do want it to be used, so we're glad you're coming in to see us to use it, so.
Yeah, um, we're happy to be using it. After the pandemic, we got, we lost some space, uh, to people bond. Though, and as we include Dunbar families with our pack, we, and so much of what Dun, uh, Dunbar youth do for our expenses more than above, so we'd like to bring something that not.
Thank you.
And this is a great spot here for, I think, easier parking. We got some outdoor space to, you know, kids root around and stuff, so.
Fred, you have a comment?
Yeah, uh, the American Legion, we have our flags up there.
Yep.
Um, we're gonna speak for the commander. If he wants to use that American flag in the stand, it's in the back room, the back hallway.
I'll show him where it is.
Okay. You know, we don't have a problem with that.
Appreciate it. We do have our own flag, but yeah.
Okay.
We, but, yeah, we do, we do spend time, uh, last year, like, we had a pack meeting about flags. One of our adult leaders, he was an Afghanistan veteran, so he brought his flag in and teaching the kids how to fold it and respect it. Circumstances.
Okay. I'm gonna say, enjoy the meeting space and meeting, okay? And hopefully it'll be no issues.
Thanks for coming in.
For a request.
Thank you.
For next year, too. We'd love to keep a consistent space, so I'll just get with you about.
Yes.
We'll make it, you know, we'll make it work.
Lea is working on a system to streamline it because we have some groups that meet on a regular basis.
Yeah.
And so, like we said, three months, maybe that, we can extend it out because we're in pencil, we're starting to pencil in groups that we know we're gonna use it.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so we'll talk to you about it.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. You're all set.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. We, we. Lea, you and, uh, do you have the, uh, the check?
Uh, well, actually, the Old Home Day Committee with their event, where they held, um, um, four vendors that were present on Old Home Day.
Right.
They collected a fee.
Right.
That came through my office. The money was deposited into the general fund, but it falls under the unanticipated revenue. And the purpose for that, and it's like from year to year, there were times that this, the committee ran short of money. So this was another avenue for them to get a little bit of extra money and put towards their budget, so, um.
And I'll make a motion in per R S A thirty-one dash, uh, colon ninety-five dash B, subparagraph three, subparagraph B, to accept unanticipated revenue in the amount of five hundred and fifty-five dollars from Old Home Day vendor fees to be used, uh, in, for additional costs in the event, and the remainder being deposited in general fund. Circle that.
I'll assert it.
Any discussion on that? The, is, the Old Home Day is gonna talk to us a little bit more about that in a moment?
Before they speak, I think I gave you the report of their budget. So I did a detail of what they expended. They allotted, uh, fifty-seven million dollars.
Okay, I just wanna make a motion to accept that one.
You haven't done it?
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now put it in.
Okay. So you have the report in front of you, Mike?
Mm-hmm.
They overspent slightly. Um, the unanticipated revenue will offset what they overspent. Um, there's no action as far as adjusting monies that I recommend. It's just an, um, adjustment entry, which is just a little more work. But this gives you a true representation of what they cost and what they spent.
They overspent by two hundred and fifty-three dollars and change, which was minimal.
And there may be a couple of invoices out there that I haven't seen yet.
And they're already.
Like, I don't know if you have any to give us for reimbursement?
Okay. But they're already up, like, five hundred dollars, so it's a net plus. So, thank you. And thank you for keeping it with the committee. I want to say thank you. The, uh, the burgers were great. Two dollars a, uh, quarter, a third pound burger. Company complaint. I, and I think it's this year, we had a run on hot dogs, I understand?
Yep.
And, uh, because those were only fifty cents, so you could have, you could have four hot dogs for the price of the burger.
That's right.
And, uh, so overall, uh, the townsfolk were, were ecstatic with the prices. And some just couldn't believe. And so, and then the ice cream on top of that? That's a, that's a cake. And the cake, that's a formula for win-win.
Yeah.
Okay. And the fact that you're a few dollars over, you brought some vendor fees in. I'm ecstatic. It's no, it's not an issue with me. Gentlemen, do you have any other issues with that?
No, it's good.
Okay. I'll give, I'll give it to you to give us our update. And who's the committee chair? John? You're elected.
No, I didn't turn it down yet.
Any updates you wanna give to us, other than we, we understand the budget and things go?
A couple of things.
Okay.
I made notes of. First of all, for the parade, our permit, I guess, had the parade starting at ten o'clock. Uh, Mike Gorman would not let us get it formed in the west lane and that. And, you know, we had a lot of kids walk into the parade this year and everything else. And so, talking with Lea, we were thinking that maybe next year, we'll make the permit for, uh, nine forty, which gives us twenty minutes to get up there and get people, you know, off of Barnard Road and then, uh, you know, I'll, and we'll start moving down toward Ken's place as people fall into place. But we had cars going by us in both directions and that. And he was telling us to get off the pavement, get off the pavement. And, you know, at ten o'clock, he wanted us off the pavement. Well, that's when we're gonna start the parade, and that's when we had the first volley from the first, uh, New Hampshire regiment. You know, it's at ten o'clock.
That's our police.
And it makes it really confusing, you know? And, um, George?
I'll, I'll talk to the chief a little bit about that. And I like your idea of, of having the permits a few minutes early. Again, he's probably going to let him in law, but ten o'clock is ten o'clock. And what story he has, ten o'clock, well, you, you're denying, uh, you're building his road because you have a permit.
Now, can I ask you a question, just 'cause I've never been up that end? Do you all assemble on Barnard Hill and then come out at one time?
Well, we had it there, but we also had them all the way down, uh, South Highway, too. So you had, you got horses, you got kids, you got.
Could you put everybody on Barnard Hill Road?
No, I mean, can't. They don't want us on there either, actually.
Right. In, in the past, past years, that is where the, you can line up with them, down, down, uh, down, uh, Barnard Hill. But, but, but last year or the year before, uh, we were, uh, we were told to, like, change that and, and stay s- stay strictly on, on the highway.
What was the reason for that, seeing as it's?
I, I think, I think.
I should line it up this year. Um, 'cause I had played in the band at the same time, and George did. But in the past, they would tell me that, that we weren't supposed to go on Barnard Hill Road. I put all the floats, all the kids on Barnard Hill Road.
Yeah, man.
And it was.
Thirteen was the main drag.
Thirty miles an hour. And all the, all the empty cars and fire engines and everything else would be on, uh, Route thirteen. And, uh, each year, they tell us, don't line up on Barnard Hill Road. But who wants all these little kids on Route thirteen when there's traffic going by?
I, I think a, a little discussion with, we can have as a board with the chief for next year. And I, and your idea of, uh, having a kickoff at ten, but having a permit for maybe a few minutes more. That makes sense.
Yeah. And that way.
Nine thirty.
It solves his problem, the closing off their, uh, trail sides.
Correct.
And that, and, uh, he wasn't gonna do that till ten o'clock.
Right. So I, I think, uh, it's not an old, it's not a problem that can't be solved.
Yeah, we face it.
Yeah. But, because it's a good, it's a good, a good point of order that we can bring up and discuss.
Yeah. The, the, uh, first time we were, um, told, you know, you know, you know, don't line up down on, down on Barnard Hill, uh, on, on, on Barnard Hill, but there, I, I, I remember them saying that there were some residents on the road like that.
Yeah, for three minutes. If I get a permit for you to be on that road also, then I don't think that's gonna be a.
But, but it is always one lane, and if you drive around town now with all those trucks out there working, there's a whole bunch of places that are.
I, I think.
One lane, and, and it works.
The solution, the solution's too easy here.
Yeah.
And Don already alluded to one way of making it happen.
Right.
That way, we keep the state off our backs.
Right.
On Barnard Hill, they wouldn't have an issue. The state would be.
Exactly. But some, sometimes the Barnard Hill is, is, I like the idea of, of the main drag. Why can't we use it? It's a nice straight and ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Don?
Well, that's, uh, the parade, uh, baking contest. Uh, we're gonna need at least three to four people upstairs to receive and help the judges and everything. Uh, next year, we had Lisa, uh, Mark, or Lisa Power, rather. And Lea jumped in and helped, and, um, I'm gonna tell you, two of the gods, and, because we all, you know, were spread so thin and that, like, it just made it tough.
I, I heard one of the judges was doing a taste testing, and he, he got sugar high on it.
Yeah. Be, Be must do it, uh, Addison Chase.
Yes.
And Addison, you know, everybody, you know, took a sample, maybe one or two bites, and he finished the whole thing.
Thing is, I was thinking, we gotta find, follow the wine law. You take a bite and spit it up. No, I, I'm only joking, but I think it's.
Yeah, we don't want that on the floor.
No, no. But the thing is, I think I.
I went over at that table, and how much baking was done? It was just, uh, neighbors and kids that I never thought would have put something in that baking dish.
Yeah. No, in, in the barn, we had, we had a minimum of six in each category, and twenty-five total. And so we had, we had a good turnout, and, and they're still talking about it on the community page and everything.
Yeah.
And, uh, everybody had a lot of fun. Uh, Candace Moore, uh, that, uh, won first place for the cake. And, uh, she, she said, I've never entered a baking contest before. You know, and, uh, uh, the gal that came in second, they both made the same type of cake.
Okay.
And that.
So it was a competition there?
Yeah, there was a little. Well, I made that cake, too, you know?
Well, Lea came first and second there.
Yeah.
Neck and neck.
But, but, you know, it's a blind judging because there was only numbers on the cakes and that.
So you don't know.
And so they didn't know what it was. And as you can see from the book there, you know, with all the, uh, people that entered in the different categories and that. They did an excellent job. Hopefully, we can get them back, and, uh, Sally was a pretty help with that because that way, we had women there, you know, that maybe would've cooked it a little better.
You know, if you wanna, as a committee, if you wanna put any shout-outs to some people who were, um, helpful, we can put them on the web page for a week, just to let them have some little free publicity saying, as a thank you. If you can get a list of Lea, Lea can put that out there. But don't ever make the list. You gotta have the list ready to go, in a word document.
We had a lot of volunteers in the food tent. And they, they just ran it a hundred percent.
If you wanna, if you wanna make a, make a paragraph, make a blurb and put some of the highlights in, that'd be great. We could put that out there, let it run through a week or two. Okay, go ahead, Don.
Uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Tom, 'cause he had the food tent.
Oh. We bought ten to fifteen percent more food than last year. Because last year, we didn't sell out, so I said, well, why is this supposed to be old and nice? So let's go to more food. Um, I keep an accurate record for, uh, probably the last seven or eight years as to exactly what was bought and what was sold, what was left over. So when Don and I go to Sam's Club on Friday night, we pretty much say, okay, we eat this, uh, this many items. And, uh, we bought extra, and as you said, we had a run on hot dogs. Last year, we had.
Run on spoons, too.
And run on spoons. Yes, well, I didn't know we were gonna eat some Swiss or cake. The, uh, so this year, we sold twice as many hot dogs as we did last year. Uh, and we sold the almost exactly the same number of cheeseburgers. And we did, we did go up from a dollar fifty to two dollars because the hamburgers went up dramatically. Uh, and we did the bigger rolls this year. Uh, we had bought the cheaper rolls because they were like half the cost. But in order to keep those ones, if you buy in the sixteen-pack, for like two dollars and thirty-eight cents, they made them smaller. They were like, they were like.
Were, were.
It was like, when are we getting this junkie?
Take your words.
Thirty rolls. So we bought bigger rolls, and, uh, we still, you know, managed to get everything cooked up. The cooks did great. I mean, it, it, there was a line at one point, you know, when we, when they first got busy, but I don't think it took five minutes to go to the line.
No, it was, I thought it was.
Yeah. They did a phenomenal job. Uh, the soda was all cold, we had plenty of water.
I didn't get the beer. Where was the beer?
That was at Don's house.
But, uh. It's a family event.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We had, had a, a, a beer tent, beer tent several years ago, but, um, that was, um, no, you know.
No, the thing is, you don't, you, the liability there to someone know, after, if someone got her.
Well, if we start the beer tent early enough, we won't have to, we won't have the cops stopping us from on the parade.
And then we might get a little more help setting up the tents.
Uh, okay, great. Would you like to open up for suggestions? I mean, we, we basically kept it very simple.
Yeah.
Uh, hamburgers, cheeseburgers, hot dogs, drinks and chips. And I bought, I bought fifty, three boxes of chips this year because last year, we didn't quite sell two. We sold out all three boxes like halfway through the lunch rush. So it's like, you never really know for sure. You don't wanna buy too much, have stuff left over, but, um, we, you know, we'll buy a little extra next year just to be on the safe side. Of course, we don't buy till Friday night because you don't know what the weather's gonna be the next day until Friday night.
Yeah, if it's gonna be downpour, you gotta cut it in half.
You gotta, you're only gonna play, you know, if it's gonna be hot, it's gonna be cold. If it's gonna be super hot, you're gonna buy a lot more drinks and soda, more ice. You know, if it's gonna be cool, you're gonna buy less soda, more hot dogs. So, uh, we got it down to, you know, a pretty good size.
Overall, I gotta say, the day was a hundred percent success. There was no, I didn't see any problematic issues aside from the, uh, eight-month parade, the starting time, but that can be fixed or remedied next year.
Yeah. And Ken did a fabulous job on the craft tents. Yeah. We worked pretty well. Two people didn't show up, one for medical reasons and one because a caretaker for a child quit.
That's me, yeah.
Otherwise, everybody showed up and had a great time. They wanna come next year.
Great.
So.
I thought some of the vendors were not as heavy as previous years, but they, I had no issue. I saw the vendors had no problems.
Yeah, I never even got around.
I got as far as the food tent.
Yeah.
Although I, I have to say, I did buy, uh, one chance in one of the vendor's tents. And it won.
Oh, really?
And they delivered it to my house. It was very nice of them.
Wow. Cool. It was that big, they had to deliver it?
Well, it was two bottles of wine.
The Democratic Party.
I have one question for the committee. Um, has anyone commented or, um, made any recommendations for the date that you hold? Does August seem to be the, a good date for the, for the event, or?
It's on my birthday this year, so it'll probably be done.
Yeah, it was, that's the only reason we added that, yeah.
I, I think you went, waiting till September, I think it's almost too late.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. School is, school is back in session. Um, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the weather can be, um, more, 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 uh, more, more iffy. When, when, when we, when we changed from September to August, attendance went right up.
Just about doubled the attendance.
Yeah.
You tend to have a warmer day in mid-August than you do in September. And you have less than half the chance of rain in August as you do in days of September.
Then it becomes a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Except this year. This year, it was fifty percent chance of rain every day.
And what do they need to forward today? To be.
I have one, I have one other question. Maybe you guys know it, and this is something we probably bring up with the police department, but they stopped the parking on the opposite side of the road. Everybody that walks from the school, which I did, you're walking by the cars parked in the streets, or you're actually walking in the lane.
Yeah.
I think if we do no parking, it should be on both sides of that road because.
Or the side that they're gonna walk on.
Because you're walking in the lane because the cars are halfway out in the lane that are on this side of the road.
Right. When they're leaving, they're gonna be walking on the other side, so you're right, both sides would make sense.
It's such a tight spot.
Actually, when you leave, though, you can't walk on that same side.
Which is a hundred more yards to park in the school. It'll, I mean, there's lots of space out there.
I just think we should.
It's only on like three cars that you park there.
Well, I got a lot of cars moved when I told them that the cannon was gonna fire.
Right.
So everybody had to move their cars from the, uh, east side of the outhouse for, for the cannon.
But the, the whole day seemed to work out very well.
Yeah. So I, I say thank you to every member of the committee who helped out. Thank you. I really mean that. The thing is, it's a, it's a nice little, uh, celebration this town has. We don't, we used to do fireworks. We don't, can't do it because of the danger, but this is still, I mean, all ages enjoy that. I mean, I had adults. I had adults raving about the magic show. I mean, it was for the kids, but the adults loved it. They were glued to it.
Did you see the kids floating? I saw that when I was in line at the, uh, the food tent. You know, the kids floating, you know?
Can I just make one more comment? Um, you guys work so hard, and I see it, and we try to help out and support you in our office, but we're limited when we're, we're here working. But perhaps maybe at town meeting, we could, and in school meeting as well, advertise that we need help to, for the Old Home Day Committee. And they don't realize how many, how often you meet and what you guys are planning and pulling together, and it's a lot of work, a lot of time. And it would be nice to get some, uh, younger families involved and to help you out.
I totally, I concur totally.
Megan, Megan did a wonderful job of, uh, getting all the, uh, acts and, uh, bunked and everything. And, uh, we lost a face banner, and she got another one. We come in and, uh,
Wonderful.
It was, uh, you know, I could say a team effort in that. We come in and uh it was uh, you know, I could say a team effort in that.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it can't be number one, it's a team that makes it work.
Yeah.
Yes.
So everybody, you know, uh pitched in and we need help pitching the tents uh for setup and tear down. Because, you know, all of us are getting into our seventies and.
And eighties.
Eighties. So it's uh.
And, and like, like, for years and years, we were setting it up on the Friday uh, uh, morning. And we had, had, had help from the, the, uh, the men's, the men's coffee group. But that men's coffee group is now late seventies, early eighties and whatnot. Uh so.
Yeah, I think what, I would go, concur with all the lean's suggestion wise, let's make an appeal to the community at both the time of the school board. And school board and the, uh, like, parlor state are gonna tell me to, if you want, if you wanted, I'm gonna talk, we have a certain person who's good on PR. Maybe you could make something for election day too, you know? Don? One more table, one more banner.
One thing, I think, I think those flyers that went out worked real well. The only thing is they didn't have a start time on them. They didn't have the time of the parade. The only thing that was on that for time was ice cream for the select.
That was the important stuff, the important stuff.
Hey, come at eleven.
So I did have a couple of them calling, hey, what time does it start?
Part of, part of it was we're, right up until uh the day, we're juggling where the magic show is gonna be or, you know.
But if we could at least do the, the brainstorm, I think would be the biggest thing.
So it, it was, uh, we had, we had some turmoil there, but uh, yeah.
I think that flyer generated a lot of different people.
I put in there as much information as I could, you know, without dictating, you know, how it's gonna be. But Megan did uh post uh the lineup uh, I think on Friday or something.
Yes.
On the community page.
You know what I did is I Googled town of Dunbar old home day. This year didn't come up, but last year came up and the times were similar, so.
Yeah.
I put it on the whole page as soon as I got confirmation.
Plus, we could also put something on, on the marquee here too. Praise God, it's ten o'clock, be there.
Yeah, yeah.
Ten o'clock is the kickoff time for everything.
Yeah. So. Okay, well, the evening is moving on, so I'm not gonna hold you gentlemen. I'm gonna assist, end it with you by saying thank you again and we look forward to next year. Don't top on a budget. Don't top on a budget.
Thank you.
Quite as many people as though.
I got the, one thing I wanted to ask you, uh, the garden club's gonna have a giant moment sale. I was wondering if I could put one of the batters out here on the comments.
I have no issue with that.
Sounds okay.
Cause you, you're one, you're, 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 you please sit up after it's done. Thank you. So I think it's uh, I'd say I'll just plug it.
Uh oh.
Finally, that is, that's a road agent.
Water department.
Yeah.
So Jeff, Jeff, here in the middle of a meeting, you wanna, can you, you wanna swing by tonight or show, you wanna blow it off for tonight? This is, oh, this is, this is my committees. I'm gonna pour it right. Exactly. I was trying to get, get a hold before the meeting. We're in the middle of a meeting now, so bear with me. If you wanna come by, we have an hour public and you could be invited to it. Well, let's say fifteen minutes. Okay, thank you. Okay, I, I apologize for that and for the record, that was a road agent I invited him early and the thing is, he's, we got an issue to talk about, so. Forgive me if we did do an app, sometimes you gotta, sometimes you gotta make. How can I guy? Hello? Road agent again. Sir? I think you might have. And I'm gonna blow the volume. Okay, I apologize again. Uh, okay, so we're good.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
Yes, like, if you wanna get a paragraph, just to acknowledge, to surprise some of the people who really worked hard, you wanna call up my name, just create a paragraph, pass it on to lean and she'll put it up on the website.
Make sure we don't forget anybody.
If you wanna really call someone else.
Thank you guys.
We could just, we could, we could just take the stats page, how many hamburgers and hot dogs are served.
That's right.
Hey, do we have one other thing on the agenda? Hold on, Tom. Do we have the picture that we're holding for the stage?
It's there in the pocket of mailbox. No, not that, the mailbox?
Your mailbox.
Yep.
It's to your left, I think. The stat page is on here.
We'll, we'll, well, Tom's here waiting to talk about that.
Sure. Okay, Jim, you also, this has to do with the sponsor nation.
So Tom, it was nice enough to do a rendering, Justin, of.
I, I'd like to say credit but Karen did it.
Oh, Karen did, okay.
If I did it.
She told you did.
She would've crashed on a damp if I didn't.
So anyway, uh, right now, the sound system and the AV, the curtains here and the speakers are here. And right here on each side of the stage are the two big subwoofers for the um, the subwoofers for the sound system. And Tom and I had talked about putting on the backside of each of these doors um when I had left. Right now, they're wired right here. They were hoping to put them behind the stage here. Um, they are gonna have to turn them from vertical to horizontal. You're gonna have to lay them down to fit them in here.
Gotcha.
So these grates would go this way and probably we'll paint the grates black instead of white like it's shown in here. But it would cause minimal cutting in that old fir and it's not actually in the stage, it's right underneath the wall section. Tom, I didn't go under there. Uh, are the studs for the walls coming all the way down?
We would fit under there. It's about this big. Um, the studs, alright, it's a balloon type construction and they're from the stage. They, they go all the way down. There's a header across that the stage floor sits on. Uh, that's why we lay them on their side. But the speaker itself's only twelve inches, so we don't need an opening.
So you'll leave the studs, you're just saying, a very, you know. Now, you'll leave the studs, cut the decking or the, uh, the fir planking out.
Yep.
And then put the grate on, but the speaker actually would be sitting behind that.
Yeah, and they do make some really nice wood grates, so um, you know, I'll investigate all the different options, put two or three together. Actually take them up there, see which ones kinda look the best.
Now, I had run this by Karen and I think Margaret that were up there.
I wanna make you situationally aware on another issue that came up. They, the way they installed their electric box is in violation of code. John Wigan basically informed lean of that today.
He went up to look at the smokes and he saw.
He saw that. So there's gonna have to be, they're gonna have to do some corrective action. Just be aware of that. And so John put enough.
Is it too close to the smoke?
Yeah, too, too close to the.
Electrical panel's supposed to be two feet or is it?
I, it's, it's.
All three foot clearance in front of the electrical panel.
Yeah, and it's not.
So just be aware, yeah, be aware of that, that's a work.
That'd be some work.
That'd be a work in progress. I, I think it's, John picked the nuts and I think it's all about safety, so it's all, it's doing the right thing. So just be aware of that.
Yeah. Um, so it's minimal cutting from the stage here.
I think it's a little less cutting is great.
But what I did wanna say is, I brought this up to the other girls and on, on the front side of the stage, you have the additional floor in there. As you know, cause you crawl around probably the most since the kids were out there, underneath the stage, the rough cop boards in there, but nothing else. So I wanna make sure whatever we do, whatever box you put those in, we're trying to send the sound outward because it will be louder.
Downstairs.
Downstairs and we also are concerned about the tin ceiling and the, you know, the vibration from those. So we're just gonna have to watch it closely and see how it works and.
Can you, can you guys go for vibrating the panels off downstairs?
Well, having fixed the ceiling on the stage, the tin ceiling's left, I, I know exactly, you know, how those ceilings work now. And uh, you know, if you keep an eye on it, if something does start to come loose with a very minimal amount of TLC, the ceiling is, is secured. The um, but the speaker will be elevated up off the floor.
Okay.
So we'll be able to build a box with a lot of soundproofing in it.
So it goes, it goes out rather than down.
And then put it on like rubber pads so that, you know, it won't.
That sounds like a claim through.
So he's bringing it up off the floor so he's not cutting the base where it's just those, those uh fir panels. I did save as many of those as I could from the renovations upstairs and they're down in our box. So if we did need to repair something, we do, if you, when you do cut them out, if you could save them.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to uh, that old hole that's in front of the stage, I can move that from, it's really kind of washed up. So if we could get some full pieces, I would just repair that, fill it back in, back to original so that we don't have that extra hole sitting there.
I'll tell you what to do. If you, if you cut the other ones out neat.
Yeah.
Save the individuals for both of them.
Yeah.
And I'll get you some from down there to make the new panel.
Yeah, we only need three pieces.
Okay.
To, to.
So I'd like to save those other ones if someday we ever put them back in or something.
Can we, can I bring one other thing? Um, showing movies. That's the purpose of that whole installation of the screen. Um, it was brought to our attention last Thursday when you guys were working out there. That we need a license to show those movies.
Well, some movies you do, yeah, not all the movies.
Because they're copyright.
Yeah, the current movies.
Okay.
Well, you can go to Old Yeller, you would need one for.
Right, yeah, or Three Students or The Marx Brothers. Uh, but a current movie, like a Disney movie and stuff, um, they, I'll let Karen find out the details because she's worked with nonprofit before and they show movies. And for a nonprofit organization, Boy Scouts, stuff like that.
PTO.
And PTO.
It would be in the way to go.
If you're not charging admission, you have like, it's like a rubber stamp. As soon as you start to charge admission, you get into copyright.
And we said, we don't wanna charge admission. We don't wanna profit making operation there.
Exactly.
And do you get a?
Or somebody else go to fundraiser.
Right.
Be charged admission.
Donations are one thing, but I have a mandatory, it's, yeah, we, we make the distinction.
Is it once a year or what?
Uh, I, I.
I think it's a, a membership. I have a library as one and there's a floor. But she recommended that we look into maybe if we have to do the nonprofit thing, under the umbrella of the PTO. Cause it would fall under that where a lot of the children would get involved.
We did a couple of uh drive-in movie things with the PTO.
Yeah.
And they took care of that, so they already had it.
Yeah.
So. And they probably, I don't know, I don't know who would actually be showing the movies, but.
I don't know who's in, who's on the PTO, I guess we're.
Um, we've got the contact, they, they dealt with this, I'll, I'll make.
Yeah.
Uh, one other thing I had planned on doing and I hadn't got to yet because I don't have access to the materials. Is if you go underneath the stage, or should you ever go underneath the stage? Um, the, it's one by eight rough boards, basically diagonal, which is typical construction technique back then. And then there's a space with no insulation and there's the tin ceiling. So when I was under the stage, I could hear Margaret talking downstairs, just like we're talking here. So because there was absolutely nothing to stop the sound transmission. So I have ceiling tiles, acoustical tiles, two by four, they're coarse fireproof tiles. And that I took out of a building that we, we scrapped the building, we took everything out, it's saved it. So I've got pallets of these ceiling tiles and it would be perfect to put two or three layers of it down and it would just soundproof that to death.
Wow, that's a nice idea.
There, there's another product out there too. It's called uh saving sound. It's a rock mineral, it's a nice shit. It's specifically designed, in fact, a couple of companies have come up with it, insulation and soundproofing. So it's fire, it's fire, it's a fire retardant and supposed to slow fires and be soundproofing too. And it comes in packs.
Yeah.
Four or six.
Yeah, the uh, that works, that's to be put in a cavity.
Right.
So these we would just set on top of the floor.
Okay.
And what that would do is not put any weight on the.
On light weight.
And it would just be, you know, it'd just be like having the hardwood floor on top of it, except for the ceiling tiles, which will stop the sound transfer through. And uh.
With fire rated?
Yeah, there's, oh, a regular commercial ceiling fire rated tiles or whatever, fire rated. The uh, if you had to go buy them, I would probably four or five bucks to tie them, I'd probably get, I'd get enough to do the whole upstairs three coats. I'd get probably six pallets of them stacked right up. But they're buried, so I've gotta, I gotta get time to move everything out and get to those ceiling tiles.
Now, other than the holes you're about to cut, there's no other hole to get them in there, is there?
Uh, yeah, in the center of the stage, there's a big trap door.
Down there?
Yeah, just drop them right down through.
That's for the magician.
Yeah, if you go into there, there's actually, there's lights under there. You flip the light switch and there's lights underneath the stage and.
It's crawl space, really.
It's a crawl space, yeah, it's, it's probably.
Exactly, behind the stage.
Twenty-four, twenty-eight inches.
Find any treasures down there in my area?
No. Nothing, a couple of wire nuts.
Something from your uh, your head game and the stage performance underneath.
Did it throw money at you when you were on stage?
Yeah.
Okay, Tom, I, I just wanted you to be here, so you got permission, it sounds like, to cut those in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He sounds listen.
And, and lean's gonna uh just oversee, just uh, and join, you wanna talk about, make sure they uh, they make sure bring the other wiring to code.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, I don't know why I didn't do that. Well, I know, because I had six guys running around doing sound stuff. And they, well, when they said we wanna put the control box here, I was thinking it was, you know, like the size of the telephone. And then they mounted this box, it was, you know, two feet wide, two feet high and stuck out that far and. And I, I should've realized at that point, it was only two feet away from the electrical panel, not three feet. So we'll just have to move it over one step.
Make, make fire check out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll let him know that he can.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, and thank you if you're, I have to.
Was that, you said the violation was too, just too close?
Yeah, he said you can't open the door. You can't even get the door fully open.
Oh, you can't? Is that closed? I didn't realize.
Okay. Let's continue, let's continue on. Uh, there's gonna be a, uh, there's gonna be a, for the sound system, they're gonna have a class on it too.
Yeah, there'll be a training.
On, yeah.
Next Monday.
On the twenty-first, four p.m.
I'll be going, giving it all on vacation.
Okay, uh, Mary will be there too?
I don't know, yeah.
I'd recommend highly.
Oh, no, she won't, but the lighter trustee will.
Okay, great.
She's not open on Mondays, she has a appointment.
Anybody else from this left who wanna go to it?
Well, I don't, I don't wanna touch anything, I might break it. But then, uh, lean's gonna be there. I'd say maybe cross, maybe cross track after you get set up one of your staff members at your leisure. Learn one, teach one. Okay, um.
Before we get off that suggestion, um, do you want to give lean permission to have Joe Marie get two more tables dropped this, we'll start, oh, four?
No, the, 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 the line away tables.
Yes.
Yes.
Four would be enough. And if we have an event that needs more, then we'll think about it then.
You want the same long?
Yeah.
And then manage to make it match you.
The other ones folded in half. I actually think these ones that are solid are a little bit better.
Absolutely. And they're not that, if you have two people, they're not that, they're possible. Um, on another note, the fan is in the hallway. It's quite a large box that needs to be assembled.
Oh, okay. And then uh, you wanna get your handyman to do it? Or you, who do you wanna do it? What the handyman do?
How about if I call somebody from the transfer station?
Sure. That'd be fine too?
Hours to.
That'd be fine. That'd be fine too?
Before I forget, I'm gonna tell you one more thing. We have two different locks. I think I either gave them to you or to Mary, probably to Mary. Two different locks, two different keys for that back corner, the storage area.
I don't have any keys for the back storage door. Are you talking about the, the container that I'm correct or in the ladder?
Back corner up here.
Yeah.
And the uh, there were two different locks. You had one and Mary had one.
Can you remember the number or something?
I gave, I gave them to them, they had the keys.
Okay.
Okay, and the locks. What I'd like to do is buy a pair that matches.
Oh, yeah, so they, they usually sell them two.
Yeah.
And there's four keys.
Yeah. Could you get a new pair for those two in case?
So you want a key lock and padlock, key padlock?
Yeah.
Two of them.
Two, cause there's each door there in case we decide we wanna lock that up. We don't have the ability to do it.
Well, right now, we're using it for like catch-all for home day. The cleaning crew needs that.
Right, so you can give them a key to it and, you know. You can decide on who's using the room.
Cause I'm just.
If you wanna use it, you, you know, cause we're putting our tables and everything in there, so you can decide who, who's using it, I guess.
I mean, you can lock, and, so you don't want anything like tables that would be easily accessible to everybody that could stay out of that storage area, maybe in that other open room?
I'd like them in the storage area if they can, that's what I'm saying.
We're gonna get rid of the piano, so there's a whole room in there.
I can work on going out next week. We'll get it.
Because it's pretty tight in there. Somebody, uh, somebody asked Joe Marie to order more soap, which she says, I can't believe the soap's already gone. I said, please walk over there. I could do it, but I'm gonna ask you to do it this time. She went over there, they found it in a box, under a box. That they couldn't see. So the cleaning crew was looking for soap to fill the dispenser. And it was underneath trash bags and box and other things. So nothing's really, should be on shelving, organized, marked, labeled, whatever, but.
Yeah, it was all together, all the stuff the janitor needs, those together.
Okay, alright, moving on. I wanna, we talked about copyright law already.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Kelsey Road, Red, uh, Red Wave is a work in progress. There's uh, we have Ed Roy just talking with Dave Mullin. And stuff, is it, I don't think, we're still on a way, uh, way out?
No. I don't know where they're at.
Okay.
Well, I, I think they're close, but they're just conversing, they're keeping us out of it. I just, they're gonna try to come to an agreement.
Okay.
Between both surveyors. But before we get off the library thing, we saw the email from John Wigan, do not use the old curtain.
Yeah.
And, and he, I said, John, if that's the case, it should come from you and reply all and everyone that's important will know about it. So he's not recommending that they put playing it or do anything with it because it's not fire retardant and it's really.
I only kept it there cause it's nostalgic, it's all wood, hundred and thirty years old. So uh, the core of that thing's pretty neat.
Well, the core you can keep, just throw the curtain away.
I would do that.
Okay. All that artwork, find out that one piece that's really covering one whole section could become a fire hazard.
Is it wood?
No, the curtain itself.
The core is wood, yeah.
Yeah, but, but they, okay, but the core's wood, but the, the fabric is got, is what.
It's a key, yeah.
Yeah, it's just trash, yeah, trash, trash.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they were gonna try to restore it or save it or put it on as a backdrop, but.
That's, that's fine. Okay, uh, COVID policy checklist, uh, this, we have a, remember the old COVID policy, we talked briefly about it?
I thought we were gonna discontinue it.
Yes, and I just wanna make formally, or I would make a formal motion to discontinue this tonight. And uh, thing is, if someone comes out with COVID, COVID is not gone, it's here to stay. They take, essentially will take sick leave if they're sick and uh, use sick leave now.
And if it's part-time, unfortunately, it's not eight and if it's full-time.
Right.
Use up your.
And I, I think we're in, we're consistent with the governor's policy, the state policy. So I like to make a motion that we discontinue our Dunbar COVID policy.
Second.
Third, any script for discussion? Karen, not all in favor?
Uh, it's a can.
But save it, we, it's not what we have, we may need in the future. There's an election coming up, right?
There's a lot of uh, documents tied to that.
Okay. Um, Chief, Chief Wigan, okay, this thing. Water testing lean, where are we with that?
Still work in progress. I did get ahold of JR and he said they would give us a quote, um.
Okay, uh, just, gentlemen, I just wanna let you know, to do a whole system, it may be overly priced. I'm gonna wait till the quotes come in. Uh, it may be, I still say, it may be worthwhile to put a machine and dispense this healthy water for twenty-five cents in there versus having, having it filtered for the entire.
I've had people comment to me, uh, that watched the meeting.
Yeah.
Since you made that comment and they just said, they can't believe that we wanna do that instead of protecting the water for all the town buildings, but you have a real filter system in a town building.
Well, we're talking about fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. That's what I'm afraid of.
Who got you up there?
Uh, I've been getting quotes, uh, the thing is, I looked at what a home would cost. A home is about thirty thousand dollars, a home.
A home for what?
To treat arsenic, radon and, and the works. The thing is, uh, this, but radon's arsenic we're worried about. Uh, radon, uh, radon is up there too and.
I've heard the systems up at eighteen, twenty thousand dollars, but never one at thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, and I, the one I'm even second wind, uh, for me. So the, the, but the thing is, I don't wanna second guess, we're gonna wait till we have quotes, it's a, it's a.
So one of the, one of the quotes that I'm looking to get, he did say that he could, if he cuts the sheet rock from the stella. And he'll provide a source to treat the water bottlers because right now, he said the fire department and the police department, police department provides water for their officers. The fire department only uses the water to wash their, the fire trucks and then the town. And then the town, granted, we're here every day, but we also provide water for the employees at this time. So the costs associated with buying bottled water versus the whole system that will serve, have to serve three municipal buildings, is gonna be higher. Because of, uh, the unknown volume that.
You're trying to like stream municipality, but it's still one water source.
Yeah.
If you have a house and you service three houses.
They look, they, they quote your service by the gallons that you use. So they have to estimate.
We're municipal, we use very little gallons.
No, the thing is, you're talking about, if you're gonna.
You're not taking showers enough.
Like, you have the fire departments, they wash trucks, every time they go up, they wash trucks, uh, that's a lot.
These too, they, they probably say.
And so that, what, it's like, it's like I have a softener at home, do I put the water softener on the, on the outside of the building for outside space? No, but if I did that, I'd be putting, I, I'd be, why am I treating water that I just gonna run down the drain?
Let's see what they have for you.
Yeah, no, yeah, I agree.
We're talking about stuff that's fictional here.
No, it's not fictional, it's real, like, it's real money.
It's real money, but we don't know what the money is.
It's gonna be, well, the thing is, it's gonna be higher than I think we're, we're, we're gonna fool ourselves if we think it's inexpensive. Go ahead, Jim.
Do you get results back of what is wrong with the water?
Yes, we did.
Oh.
Uh, there's two things I see weren't wrong. Um, one thing is, uh, is arsenic. Which is, uh, basically, and then radon, I think is radon is, uh, sub, subject to, um, interpretation. But as Dave said, I, we don't take travels with radon.
Yeah, arsenic's above the level?
Yes. Radon is above the recommended level too.
I think that's consistent on all the people's arsenic.
It's, Dave, it's characteristic of the center of town.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, uh, we're, we're, we just gotta wait before we have some, uh, some real numbers before we can make a decision. Agreed. But we do, we did get it tested.
Uh, what, it came back as?
Yeah, arsenic is probably the one, the biggest, uh, and arsenic's not exactly, it's not a great product item in the, uh.
But they did lower the threshold just recently.
Yeah.
Yeah, from where it was. Did, did the company ever come out, Lee, and identify the pipe that's called to the new addition?
Nope.
Why did they not call?
You were supposed to contact the plumber from Chicoi.
No, there was a scheduled meeting when they were coming out. I didn't make the meeting, that's what I was wondering if they did come out.
I don't recall anyone coming out for that, so I can't tell you, no.
Okay, well, we, we still need to get that to Jerry.
Oh, okay, so the email I sent to Kelly, she was able to work something out.
Somebody, uh, scheduled a meeting, I don't remember making it.
I don't remember seeing it. Yeah, a lot of emails.
Seven thirty a.m. on the fourteenth.
Oh, no, that was for the flag hold.
Irish, did they get that?
Yes.
That's been taken care of.
What was that, Lee?
She said that the, the housing that holds the bomb was the eye that censored, no, it was broken off, it was like pushed in.
Okay.
So, uh, she replaced that, she replaced, and it kept causing the breaker, which is on the north, the south side of the building, uh, on the outlet. So she replaced that, and she said she was gonna label the, uh, outlet box so that it was clear as to what served what.
If you can, um, reach out to Kelly or, um, I think, go ahead and do that, I don't know again, and I'll try and meet with him if can, we'll find the source of the addition. Maybe we can just treat that addition pipe, Mike.
Point of source, yes.
Without cutting the.
Oh, without cutting, yeah.
Okay, from the basement area? But one thing that was pointed out to me is the new electrical room that's down in the basement completely blocks the access.
They just didn't want crawl that day they were there. The pipes don't come out from behind it. But you can crawl in, there's those guys, that's how they tied into it.
Right, but they, the source to the fire department, the police department is right behind, the on, off switch, those access points are supposedly right behind.
We just have to get point of source, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Cause we're not gonna, what, what I was losing too early, I don't necessarily wanna treat water that's gonna be used just for washing vehicles. I wanna treat the babbles.
Yeah.
Point of source makes more sense, and it's probably doable.
That's why we might be able to do it if we get that.
You don't like my vending machine idea, do you?
Okay, I already have flag about it.
So, okay, ask Kelly to flag the piping that's.
Ask Kelly to reach out to, um, Serret Brothers, they did the pump plumbing. To see if they can come and show us the pipe sourced from the new addition.
And label.
And labeling. And if you, if you set the appointment date like you did with the other, now we'll try and make it.
I think labeling is important, because, you know, we're not around, we don't have to label.
Okay, so if we get hooked to that, then we're just worried about the addition part.
Amen.
Yeah.
Exactly, that, that's, that's doable by a sense.
Okay.
A little bit of plumbing that's done. Okay, um, I think that takes care of the mailbox now. I'm gonna open up to those public comments, right, anything?
Yeah, um, Monday, Mark Lane and I were talking at the fire station. Uh, seeing how the second floor is open now and being used, you might be thinking about maybe getting an AED installed up there.
Hmm.
You know, the February later, that you get away.
Tell me, already talked about that.
We had talked about it.
We did.
Where's your time for?
I guess I've mentioned it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did he say you could money afford it or something, or he has a usual in somewhere else we can put up there?
No, we just, we talked about relocating one, but we asked him to.
Cause there's one in the library, right?
Right, he says it's by the bathroom, but it's not accessible.
Yeah, but the library's closed downstairs, has no access to the station.
That's a bathroom, stick downstairs from foyer, but we shouldn't have one upstairs.
I think we should have a bevel upstairs.
Yeah, the, uh, we were talking about where to put it, he said, can't put it inside the main hall because it's not heated. And that'll drain the batteries, if it's not, and not heated portion, so in the hallway, you'd have to maybe put it there, but he was thinking about between the two windows that are up there, I should watch the outside wall, it's gonna get cold.
Now, how about in the area where your flags are?
Well, that's not heated either, is it?
What do you mean, the whole upstairs is heated to the same temperature?
Yeah.
It stays fifty-five up there.
Yeah, cause we were thinking, if there's a room, put it between the elevator and the bathroom on the second floor. So when you come up the stairs, you see it.
Yeah, there's, there's room there.
Oh, um, we were just talking about, you know, that's.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how big they stick it or anything.
They're not that big.
Just like over here, it's something about this big.
Small box.
Okay.
Only about, um, six inches deep.
Okay, I too, that's, I like the idea of having one on the second floor, gentlemen?
Yeah, we are.
Yeah.
I already discussed that one part, I don't know where.
We're rehatching.
Where it's foul, but, it's alright. Lee, if you just put that as a, as an action item, uh, we wanna, if we had, if we need to order one, we order one, bottom line.
I'm gonna check with the Meyer line, he's, um, and, he says, as an, as an example, the ones that congregation on church, they're gonna keep it in the vestry.
Correct.
Cause that's seating, but the church is lost, huh?
So Mark gets involved because there's, um, actually a mapping of all the AEDs that are licensed and to, for battery expiration and in the event of emergency, they can send emergency, um.
Yeah, I thought he said something about refurbished one or something, he had some plan.
Mark, Mark Lane, right?
Yeah, he was gonna come back to us, I think, is how we wanted it.
Only doing that from memory. Okay, and so I, I don't, we got, we have to address, thank you for bringing up, right, it's a, it's a slight safety issue. Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the board, Lee, and I'm gonna let you go first.
Um, John Wigan did do a sidewalk of his building and the library for the, um, to compare to the inspections for the smokes. And he agrees with the report. So, but those have been, um, process of the May, they've ordered the parts, and it would be getting scheduled and different parts to install those.
Great.
Um, how about the activity for the punch list from town hall, have your, have your handyman been able to install?
The gym is coming from my office, he's gonna rekey that core to the eleven keys you have.
Yeah.
So your keying system should be set, and he's gonna check the, uh, control rod for the opening and closing on the door, to make sure it's functioning properly.
Right, right now, you could jiggle the door and open it.